Okay, ladies and gentlemen, about thirty more seconds and we're gonna get rolling here. Please find your way back to get a cookie if you want, a brownie. Anything? Okay. Would like to remind everybody, we are streaming live on Ustream. So, uh... With that said, special city council meeting, September fourteenth, twenty sixteen, at 6:00 P.M. Call the Castle Hill Special City Council Meeting to order and determine whether a quorum is present. A quorum is present. First item on the agenda will be a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year two thousand seventeen budget and the proposed two thousand sixteen tax rate. Now, I wanna make sure that the, uh... The, uh, public has enough time to speak about this, so we're gonna let the public go first tonight before we get started. And then we'll move into, uh, questions... Any questions council may have to our department heads. Obviously, we're gonna have a little leniency here since only one person signed up. So, uh, with that said, the gentleman at... I'll call this meeting to order at six oh one, which will be the, uh, public hearing. With that said, Olaf Granheim. Thank you.
Hi, um, Olaf Granheim, for those of you don't know me, I live at two hundred Glen Tower. It might also be at the corner of Banyon River at times. That's kinda my main focus. You might call me Skip right now because I sound maybe like a broken record for some of you. The Banyon Road has been pretty atrocious since I've lived in the neighborhood for twelve years now. It continues to decay and that's kinda where my focus would be on some of the infrastructure needs for the city. It's not just that the road is in such poor condition perhaps, but I believe it's also one of the greater safety hazards in our neighborhood. We've had rescues right at the block of the alley between Glen Tower and Tanworth. It's happened more than once where cars have been totaled there by flooding at a point where you can't even see there's a car in the floodwaters. So that's kind of extreme when you can't even see if there's a problem in the neighborhood. But that's my biggest concern right now. The rest of the city, I'm very pleased with our police department and fire department. I am a little bit concerned about hiring more staff when we do have such an infrastructure problem right now on roads in particular. And that's about it. Thanks for keeping up with all your work and services for the city, though.
Thank you, Mr. Granheim. I would... I would ask if maybe, uh, in the next, uh, few weeks or so, you keep an eye on the agenda, especially coming up. We're actually working in that area on a new proposal that council was working on. And I think, uh, John, since you're in charge of streets, did you wanna expound on that or did you want me to keep going? Okay? All right, good. John's...
Yeah, um, I guess real quick, and this is more of a drainage committee, um, item than a street item, because in this case, the street is part of the actual drainage for the water coming down Carrollwood. But last night at the city council meeting, if I can take the liberty on this, uh, last night at the city council meeting, um, the... There was approval made, and Mr. Shans, help me if I'm wrong, but it was up to... Was there a dollar amount associated with that, Mr. Shans? So, okay, the approval was for up to three and fifty thousand dollars on the drainage to be spent, looking at drainage issues, uh, one of them being the Manton area, which encompasses the drainage coming in from San Antonio from West Avenue, the other being the Carrollwood-Banyon area, which encompasses the drainage coming across from San Antonio on around Carrollwood area. And with that said, uh, Mr. Luis Cuellar with Klotz, with R.P.S. Klotz was here. He informed us of the work that's going on, that's been authorized by the city of San Antonio, to look more at a regional perspective, i.e., multiple-city perspective, on mitigating the stormwater runoff coming in from San Antonio in both of those areas, which would greatly positively impact the Banyon and the, uh... And the, uh... The, uh... Other street, sorry about that. Manton Street also. And it's a long... Project's not gonna happen overnight, nothing no municipal projects ever do, uh, but they're actually in the process of pushing forward on the drainage. He actually got into a little bit of details of what was going on, the type of bulked culvert, they're looking at putting in, underground box culverts looking at putting in, uh, to go ahead and try to take care of some of that stormwater runoff. And, um, as part of that, one of the things that I requested, and I would actually, at this point, would be interested if Mr. Shans could follow up on, is maybe bringing in a San Antonio representative along with Klotz to go ahead and start that dialogue on a more escalator or a more of a, uh, you know, transparent basis so we can continue to keep that forward momentum on that, on those projects. So... But there is movement forward. We're authorizing to spend the money. We're gonna try to do it in unison with San Antonio to get the biggest bang for the buck. It's gonna come through the Drainage Committee and so, which is Douglas and, correction, Douglas and also Frank, Douglas Gregory and Frank Paul serve on that Drainage Committee. So hopefully, as we move forward, we'll be able to get more information on that, on the type of work that we're gonna be doing. So, that provide... That help would provide any information at all as I'm... Okay. As part of the project, the resurfacing obviously would be done too, because they're gonna have... They'd have to completely rebuild everything under there to go ahead and put those underground drainage systems in. And so there'd be a new surface.
John?
Oh, sorry. Okay.
I'm gonna reel this in just a little. We are talking about a budget tonight, so it'd be within the money, but thank you, John, for, uh... Douglas, did you wanna expound on anything that pertains to the budget?
I wanted to first ask you, can we?
You can, as long as it pertains to the money that's in the budget. We don't wanna go off on it and, uh, things like that, but off into any rabbit trails. In fact, it would be better probably if you talked to them after the meeting, because they surely have more questions than that would pertain to the budget, but...
We'll chit-chat when the meeting's over, if you want.
Yeah. The money's in this budget, so... Okay. All right. Is there anybody else who'd like to say anything or speak on, um... Is there any other Skype users out there that would like to send in a text? Sorry, I had to do that. Okay, with that said, it sounds like the public hearing will be closed and it is now six oh nine. Council, would you... We're gonna start to the right this evening with Douglas Gregory. And have any comments or questions for the department heads? That's what the meeting's about, yes, sir, on the budget.
I appreciate all the departments and the time that they put in. I've talked with everyone in each of their department. My primary concern is the impact of adding all of new employees as opposed to having them as part-time, because new employees are not covered by our health insurance and will not be required... I mean, part-time employees are not covered by our health insurance, which is about five thousand dollars a person. And the city won't be obligated forever in perpetuity until they're dead to pay a portion of their retirement. So it's... We're in a healthier position monetarily than we've been in quite a few years, but the more you add on, the more it eats into, in the future, the amount of money that can be used for infrastructure. And that's a concern to me. Times are flush somewhat right now, but that's not... This is not the norm, this is the exception. And adding on the new employees, to me, I think is a... It's a bad policy decision, because I think you can get the same effect with temporary employees. But other than that, I think that's probably a significant thing in these budgets. That's all I have to say at this moment.
Thank you, Douglas. Next, Mr. Paul, did you have anything to expound on or question the department heads while they're here?
Yes, I'd like, uh, Mr. Shans to again explain, uh, the four employees. As I understand it, two of them already work for us and we're just taking them away from the agencies and they've come on board. One of them was already on board, probably, what, six months? I don't know, talk about, um, Kit. And then the other one is Nora, and so maybe you could help me, 'cause that's part of the four and they're already there. We're not adding two more besides them, are we?
So you'd be talking about the two in Public Works and the one in P.D. and the one in Finance. So you're talking about Nora and the three others that are not here yet, right?
Right.
Okay. The... The... If you... Kind of, you want an explanation of why? Is that what you're saying?
No, the questions... I know why.
Okay.
I just thought it would be good to go over why, so the... 'Cause I've heard this question by two or three different people, do we need more people? And as I said, I know that we already have them working here, some of them, a couple of them, and so it's not like we're adding everybody.
Okay, thank you. One is already here, as you just said. That's a part-time person who would be going... When you compare the fact that she is here and what it is costing us as a temp, it's a wash when she comes on board with, as our sole employee, not a temporary employee. When we look at the P.D., the reason that it came up, and I'll let the chief explain in detail if you wish, but essentially, we're getting approximately forty thousand dollars, a little over, for an officer we have assigned to DEA, and we would be able to add another officer who's substantially paid for. At least two-thirds of his salary is already being paid for by what they're paying us. And then we would be able to have another patrol officer on the streets for less than we would have to hire a full, fully-paid employee by the city. The two in Public Works are vacancies that have been there for a while. And the idea is that we have two garbage trucks, a driver for each one, and two people on the back, because they go down, they pick up on both sides of the street, and we pick up... We don't have anything that is... We have none of those overhead lifts, where everything's manual. And it is more efficient and actually better for everybody in terms of the work they do and the work they can do, if we could get those two employees to be left in the budget. And the use of them after they run their routes is then in essentially everything else Public Works does, streets, drainage, mowing, repairing, maintaining, those kinds of things. So those would be the four new people you're talking about. One of them is not exactly new, one is not exactly brand-new in the sense of economics. The two others would be definitely new employees.
Will we be... Will we be... I heard some conversation from Rick about the other night, or I'm not quite sure, will we be eliminating the extra lawn service that we spend twenty thousand dollars budget for? Is that... Did I understand, Rick, that he wanted to take that responsibility with the additional employees?
Is that right? No. That's up to council, that could be done, if council wishes that. That's where twenty thousand dollars could come from. But what I just heard Mr. Gregory say, I'm not... I don't think it's gonna be unanimous by any means. So, that would... But that is certainly possible and doable, but if you actually prefer that someone else do the work that they're doing and wanna keep it that way, there's still plenty of work for the others to do.
Okay, this other issue I had then, then this big percentage of pay increase in sanitation and, uh, Public Works, basically, it's not a pay increase as it is bringing the two needed people on board. Is that correct?
Suzanne and I have been going over that, trying to figure out where this money came from, and I think what has happened is there is... There is confusion when you compete... We had to go back all the way to twenty thirteen to figure out what was going on, but apparently what happens in prior budgets is because there was a vacancy and because there was a hire of initially a part-time clerk, wasn't it, and then essentially a full-time clerk, since the money was already in the budget, it was never rebudgeted. It was just that those people that were not hired, that money was used to essentially cover that particular cost. And then when we looked even further, because of the way that it works, because sometimes the people in streets work in sanitation, sometimes the people in sanitation work in streets, one person actually got moved down to sanitation, another person... And so anyway, they were trading back and forth, and it was more of a... Just a budget, just to balance the budget and just make it more clear where the money was being spent and where... Because where the people are being used. And so, in essence, whenever you look at it without that, then sanitation suddenly becomes right in line with streets and they're just... Because you would just move one person from sanitation up to streets, because they had moved one from streets down to sanitation. Anyway, it works out pretty well. There is still, obviously, a forty... What, forty thousand dollars or whatever it was, there's still that of an increase, because there's two bodies, no matter where you put them. Someone's gotta pay the salaries and the benefits.
But in the past, if I'm not mistaken, haven't we always had two people on the back of a truck?
Historically, yes, sir.
And we don't have that now?
No.
Right. Okay, that's all for now, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Squire, do you have any points you wanna point out?
I'd like to reserve my questions.
Thank you.
Please, thank you.
Mr. Daggett, I would remind everybody that this is a, uh... Hearing, and it's basically, most of our work was done in the workshops, so any questions should be directed strictly to the budget. Mr. Daggett?
Mr. Shans, do you agree with the recommendations for these additional hires?
Yes, I do.
Final question.
Mr. Trevino?
Yes, sir, I had a question for Mr. Roddick and Mr. Shans. I imagine that having extra two sanitation slash-street workers would help expedite the trash service in that morning and potentially help free them for the afternoon to do minor street repairs as necessary, is that correct?
There would... Certainly, there would be that exchange of laborers, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Mr. Squire, have you gathered your thoughts?
Thank you, Mayor.
You bet.
You know, the additional employees continue to be, obviously, a huge topic of concern, both in, I guess, in the fire department, in Public Works, and also in the police department. You know, the fire department employee is a temporary position, which will go away, and I believe it's for an orderly transition of the management of the fire... Or the, you know, of management of the fire department, and so I don't see an issue with that. I do know we are patrolling more areas as far as with the... Than what we used to, and not only that, but I believe we're facing a lot more, according to Chief Davis, um... There's a lot more activity going on that they're trying to help mitigate and, I believe, keep out of our city and protect the residents. And also, there's a way to help pay for that, too, so I see that. Also, as far as what you... And what you brought up, and I had a chance to review it, too, you know, I wish this would've been brought up back in twenty thirteen, to be honest with you, and not playing around with moving people around the way they were back then, I think that was. It was a disservice to the department and a disservice to the city to not show it exactly what was going on. It's hard to step forward with hiring a couple new employees, but with... I mean, Mr. Shans, how many years of experience do you have in city management?
Do I really... You wanna know my age? A lot. But doesn't mean that I'm always right, but most of the time I am, but not always.
Fair enough, fair enough. And I believe your recommendation that is a fairly strong recommendation, is that correct?
Yes, sir, it is. On... We're still talking about employees, right? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Okay. You know, I think we have an incredibly well-run sanitation service in regards to the service they provide, uh, you know, above and beyond. I don't know of anybody or any city at this point in this area that can match the level of service that's provided by our sanitation service. And, you know, the question is, is it economic? Is it feasible to continue that service? Well, I think if we're gonna have that kind of service, you know, it's unsafe to have one employee in the back of that, in the back, I think, covering with two employees, which is traditionally done, is a smart move. And if there's an issue for the... Also, for the efficiency, I think, I believe, I believe it's the right thing to do. If we're strictly looking at cost, then we need to look at outsourcing something like that, potentially. And so I think that's always on the table, and then I think we need to let the... Let our residents see if... Which way they wanna move forward. I believe... I don't know if anybody can match it, but I've never done the research to see if anybody could be as good as our... As what kind of service that we provide. So, I just wanted to, again, I appreciate it, and I just wanted to verify your recommendation on it, and that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess, uh, wanna make a couple of comments here, Jerry. Thank you for, again, for, uh, looking ahead, keeping us in focus, since you're gonna be out of here in, what, seven months? How many days? Thirteen? Wow, okay. Seven months and thirteen days, as it counted down to the day. Making sure that we're covered and we have somebody in the, uh... In the loop to move forward, if that's what council should decide to do at that time. As far as I'm concerned, I wanna go on record saying that was an excellent choice on your part. Chief Davis, there's no doubt in my mind that House Bill six thirty-one is... Has brought us into a new era, and that is an E-R-R-O-R. That's era. And it's pushed back the crime, is what it's done. I've heard the residents out there call it the demilitarized zone now, because we have two hundred yards around our city that we're able to patrol. The income and the warrants that are picked up in that area are obviously working, and thank you for looking ahead, keeping us in front of it. And also wanna go on record thanking you for your suggestion on hiring another person. Rick, what can I say? Your, uh... Your street activity along with... I've heard numerous people, uh, talk about the efficiency of our sanitation. We're proud of the fact that we have two pickups a week, along with trash, along with recycling, uh, and brush pickup. Your men have, uh, gone further than, in some situations where it's needed, to show that you obviously have a hold on that and a strong presence in what's going on. Thank you for your budget input. Mr. Shans, wrapping your hands around this and pulling it all together, along with admin. Kim, thank you for your work on the budget. Suzanne, thank you. So, everybody was probably thinking, is there a question on all of this? And it's yes. Can we... Can we do this again next year? So that's all the question I had. Okay. It looks like we've covered it. We're gonna extend a little leniency here again, since we had some people enter when the signup sheet wasn't there. Is there anybody else who would like to step forward under Citizens to be heard under the regular meeting? Okay. With that said...
Mr. Howe?
Yes?
I have a couple of questions I don't understand, and I'm sure they'll be cleared up if I ask Suzanne or somebody.
Pertain to the budget?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
I'm curious here. The police department's employee retirement amount has gone down in the last two years, from two hundred and four thousand to a hundred and ninety-six thousand. How is that possible? While the insurance has gone up about ten percent, the employment retirement amount approved has gone down. How is that possible?
Are you referring to the TMRS?
The what?
TMRS.
Yes.
Our percentage has gone down this year. In fact, we've gone down the last two years.
Yeah, I know that. And I mean, why has it gone down?
I can get the specific answer from TMRS.
So that's the reason why these things have gone down? 'Cause I...
Yeah, we were at thirteen... A little over thirteen percent last year, or this year, we're at twelve point seven eight, and we're going down to eleven point six.
Is there an historical norm?
If I'm not mistaken, weren't we overpaying because we had underbudgeted?
Mm-hmm.
And now we're...
And the recession hit.
The correction is taking place.
But is it historically norm of, what, ten percent?
Historically, yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted... Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna move on to item three, which is the announcement of the date for the final vote on the two thousand seventeen budget and the two thousand sixteen tax rate, the two thousand seventeen crime control prevention district budget. The government body will vote on the two thousand seventeen budget, the two thousand sixteen tax rate, and the two thousand seventeen crime control prevention district CCPD budget on September the twenty-sixth at six P.M. at two oh nine Lemonwood Drive, City of Castle Hill, seven eight two one three. Also, I would like to point out, if you should have any questions, I'd like to bring to your attention that we have cards in the back now with our new direct dial flyer, and if you have any questions on the budget or any of these dates or anything, please grab one on your way out. The system was set up during this period to make sure that we ease the flow of telephone calls coming into the city regarding the budget or any other else it may be. So, uh, it's going to lighten the load over there and give us a more user-friendly situation. Of course.
I asked last week, and I'll ask again, I encourage and ask anybody, if they have further questions that they would rather do on a one or one-to-one with any of the council people, the new report is out, it has our email addresses, has phone numbers, please use it. Please use it, questions. If somebody sends me something and I don't have the answer, I'll do what I can to find it, 'cause I don't pretend to be the sharpest tool in the shed, but I can find the shed. So, anyway, thank you.
All right. We obviously will all be available after the meeting if there's any specific questions. Other than that, Mr. Alwine, did you wanna say something this evening up at the speaker?
I'm not... I apologize for that.
No, the only reason I'm calling you out is because, you know what, we had so many people sign up tonight. I wanted to make sure that if you did wanna say something, that we gave you the opportunity to, but thanks for being here. Okay, thanks.
One name, one honor. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. With that said, do I have a motion to adjourn? Second? All right, all in favor? Done. Thank you.